On council on December 28, 2022, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our law.
Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Councilmember Romanella?
Here.
Councilmember Ramos is noted absent. Councilmember Shaining?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember LeKind?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, before we actually start with the agenda items, I'd like to mention a couple points. First of all, just like our last meeting, we have Mr. Gregory Carlson, who is a parliamentarian. He's serving as a parliamentarian in this meeting today. He's sitting in the front row. For those of you who did not attend the last meeting, I'm going to introduce him again formally with some background information. Gregory Carlson is a professional registered parliamentarian with the National Association of Parliamentarians, and he's one of approximately 350 people in the world who have attained this status. He also serves as the president of the Colorado Association of Parliamentarians. However, he appears today only in his personal capacity. He will act as an advisor and assist with matters of Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure and to assist with the conduct of this meeting so that it correctly follows all applicable rules and procedures.
I have a guest here today, if I may.
Sure.
Because we have no town attorney, I have personal legal counsel here, William Reed, from Sherman and Howard. If I have any questions, I will be referring to him.
Thank you. Hey, we also have Mr. Grant Vander Yott, who was the investigative attorney for the investigation, who'll be presenting the executive session. Okay, before we go into executive session, I'd like to mention the rules of the meeting. So I'd like to take a moment to discuss the rules before town council meetings. And we're here to discuss important issues. And as the presiding officer, I'd like to outline the rules of discussion so that we may discuss the issues and conduct our, have our conduct in a way that honors both the town council and the public. It is never appropriate to disparage a council member or a member of the public, to call a member a liar, or to attack the personal character of another member in any way. Meeting participants may not shout out comments nor shout for recognition from their chair. We will ignore members who called for the question from their seat, shout out to be called on, or call anyone names. If a member wishes to seek recognition, they should rise or raise his or her hand for recognition to come to the podium to speak. I will then recognize you to speak. Only one person shall speak at a time. If, if any member of the public comes up to the podium to speak, they are addressing the board. If the member of the public that comes up to the podium to speak and wishes to address a member of the public or a staff member, the board must determine if we'll give you permission or not first. Those are parliamentary rules. So these rules are... These rules are the principles of Robert's Rules and Parliamentary Law so that members on both sides of the discussion can speak passionately about the issues at hand and so that our discussion can be respectful. Any members who violate these rules will forfeit their speaking opportunity and be ordered to resume their seat or escorted out if you continue to not follow the rules. I am confident that all public participants will abide by these rules. Now, let's go ahead and proceed to the agenda. So now we're on number two of the agenda.
I'll move to moving the executive.
Were you going to continue with the executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so according to our open meeting laws, sunshine laws, if you will, there's all sorts of references and you can look at them up. This information has been leaked to the public on purpose. You have two people from the public who have been granted access to the information during the course of the investigation, as well as I have just been informed by the editor and a reporter from the Gazette that Councilwoman Shaining has already presented the entire report to them so that they could publish it as soon as this meeting is over. You have lost the ability to put this behind closed doors. This is now in the public purview. You, you cannot go into executive session.
Would you like to discuss it in the open then?
You can't, you have to.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Vander Yott, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I do. It is my separate duty to issue all of my statements in executive session, so I have to actually refuse your request for public discussion and put it into executive session. It is my private obligation.
Okay. So then we need to proceed with the executive sessions, since this is your right, since this is your right as an attorney, you're talking about attorney-client privilege.
You've lost attorney-client privilege. There is no more. You've lost it.
Lost it.
You can't predetermine whether I've lost privilege when I haven't made any comments yet. I have the obligation to present my report to the, to the town council that hired me. That presentation will be only made in executive session. If however, you decide later to bring it in front of the public, you're welcome to do that. But my obligation is to present it in executive session, not to the public.
The, the language in the, the actual executive session, you've, the board is already predetermined by the language misappropriation of funds by the town of monument persons, whoever those are. That is a statement of fact. You're presupposing that...
I did not write those.
Well, somebody did on this board. Either way, it's in, if you've released it to the media...
I have to, I have to give my report to you guys in private, and what you do with it is up to you guys.
No, that's not how the, that's not how the CRS works.
That's how my attorney...
You have a copy as well. We all have copies.
I don't have a copy of this report.
It's in your email.
As of when?
I was instructed to email that to you at the start of the meeting, to all the board members.
Everyone received it at the exact...
Except for clearly, clearly, the collusion continues where members of this board have received this early.
Everyone here received it at the exact same instant. Did you send it to anybody prior to this?
I did not.
What happens in this meeting with this report is not going to change the outcome of this report. So are we going to make a motion or...
One at a time. I would like to mention the misappropriation of funds by the town of monument persons, as it's written in the executive session, section. That is, was written due to, one person speaks at a time. That was written due to the, the amended report as a response to my complaint of the financial report that was filed. I filed the complaint, sir. Mr. Carlson? Yes. One at a time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out to your attention that a member did raise a point of order, and under Robert's Rules, that requires the chair to rule on the point of order as to, I cannot speak to whether or not you can go into executive session or not because that's a matter of law, not a matter of parliamentary procedure. What I can advise you on is that a member has made a point of order. You need to rule on that point of order as to whether it's well taken or not well taken, and whether or not you believe you can go into an executive session. The member then has the right to appeal that decision. In which case, it will be under Robert's Rules decided by majority vote. That's the next procedural step.
Okay, thank you. So we need to vote as to whether or not we're going to go, if we're going into executive session. Can you... Mr. Vander Yott? Can you please speak to the legal obligation here?
I can only discuss my own legal obligation, not yours. My obligation is to have a conversation with those who hired me first in private, and then after that, I can discuss...
You're going to have to get control of her right now.
One more outburst.
You're going to be removed. Yes, we do.
We have the First Amendment, but let's follow the rules for this meeting, please. Okay. Okay, shall we proceed?
Go ahead and adjourn and meet somewhere else if that's where you want this to go down. Either that or you need to be removed.
Okay. Please.
Calling for order or I'm exiting this meeting? And I'll hold it somewhere else.
Okay, we, we would like, we need to vote on whether or not this is going to be in executive session and private, or if we're going to go over the report in public. So are we going to vote to review this report in public? Do I have a motion to review the report in public?
I'll make a motion to review the report in public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Shaining?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott? Or Mary Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes. If I may ask for a brief amount of time to digest the report and the contents of the report, since it quite, quite clearly, this has been disclosed to the public in advance, and I would like at least five minutes. I have no idea how big this document is. It's 17 megs. It's probably going to take me more than five minutes. I would like time to read this and understand it before we start discussing it.
Drew? Are we going to go see the report on our single monitors?
How long is the document? Go ahead.
If I can ask for you guys to actually have a motion to waive attorney-client privilege before you do anything.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to waive attorney-client privilege in the investigation pursuant to resolution number 952022.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Hogan?
A second to that, please.
Me.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes. It looks as though it's 140 pages. Maybe we should ask for more than 10 minutes.
All right, it would take 10, 15 minutes or so. I mean, I don't have a problem with us going over it in public, but this is the, just hearing about it, the minute that we get here, classless, completely classless.
I think we should have... I haven't seen it, but I would, 15 minutes would be agreeable to me. I...
Let's take a 15-minute recess. Back to order. Back in from recess, calling the meeting back to order. And Mr. Vander Yott, would you like to go ahead and begin your presentation?
Before he starts, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, at first, in looking at this document, I was very intimidated by the length of it, but it's looking like, and it's obviously impossible to digest all of this in the time that we had, but it's, appears to me that it's the first 19 pages that really is what your synopsis, conclusion, summary, however you want to describe it, less, minus the bullet points under it that are the, the bulk of this. The rest of it just seems to be copies of emails or social media and other backup materials. Am I seeing that correctly, sir?
That is correct.
Then I would, would, I was initially concerned about having to cover, digest, or read 140 pages out loud. I think if you could cover your 19-page overview, synopsis, et cetera, without all of the micro sub-print backing up what you have, and then we can open to questions. I think that would be a good way to handle it. Am I thinking properly here?
Do you agree? Mr. LeKind?
I want to read the whole thing, but you all do what you want to do anyway, so go right ahead.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to invalidate any of it. I just don't, what, okay, I, do you want him to read the entire document, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying I want to read the entire document, and I'm on page 12.
Okay.
So you guys do your thing. It's all beyond public record what you, what you do, so go.
If we need more time, we can certainly take more time.
If we need more time, we can certainly take more time. I.
I think. I think that we should go ahead and proceed with your overview as the investigator, as Councilman Romanello requested. Thank you.
I think what I'll do is I'll summarize the issues that were presented to me by town council and then go through the recommendations that I have after, if you guys are able to read the.
One person speaks at a time. We need to follow the rules of decorum.
I think under the summary of findings, you'll be able to find more of the analysis of what, to my conclusion. So I'll just.
Is there way to improve?
We need to.
This is.
We understand. We will now speak up louder.
The town gave me three major categories of questions to answer as far as what to investigate. The first was related to the distribution of funds for promotional materials. The town asked me.
Watch it online.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Shanning. Mr. Vander Yott, could you speak a little bit louder?
I can speak a little louder.
Okay.
I'd like to address you guys.
Please to address the board. Shouting out is not acceptable. We will follow the rules of decorum where you will be asked to leave.
Can you, can you do me a favor and please repeat what you were saying about your scope? Because I didn't catch.
I would love to have this in executive session so we don't have to deal with all of the shouting.
The board voted not to, so.
Maybe reconsider. So the town asked me to look into three major issues, the distribution of public funds for promotional materials. The question was asked, did the town manager himself or through others at his direction authorize marketing and/or funding of promotional materials? Specifically, was the use of the town seal?
I'm sorry, he just mentioned the town manager in his report. That's a personnel issue. I was not notified that I was going to be talked about in this meeting.
In fact.
In the executive session, it wasn't notified.
The, is there any other town staff or board member that you bring up that has not been notified that are being mentioned in the report as required?
That was not in the scope.
Again, under executive session, I'm allowed to discuss these matters, but you've waived that right.
You are allowed to discuss them, but you still need to, if the town manager is going to be mentioned in the report as part of executive session, he has the ability to determine on his own if it's to be made public or not. You don't.
Exactly right.
He has the right to demand that it be published.
No, he has a demand to have it in public.
No, he has the right to demand that it be in public. That's his only right. I've asked that it be in private.
Mr. Reed, what is the revised statute state about people who are being mentioned in a matter that would go into executive session? And their wording is a little bit unorthodox. It talks about town persons. This is not technically an HR matter, but we don't know if it will become one. What are the rights of the people who are mentioned?
Yes, you may proceed.
My name is William Reed. I represent Mr. Lakine personally. I do not represent the town or the council, so I don't want to misrepresent what my scope is here. On this particular question, the open meeting law is under 246402, 4F, Roman numeral 1, addresses personnel matters. Anytime a particular employee is to be discussed potentially in an executive session, that employee must be notified and given the option of whether to have it be public or in executive session. If there's more than one employee, each employee has to agree that they want it in public for it to be public. Mr. Lakine, was, were there other?
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Vander Yott, I haven't seen the report, and I don't have it on my screen, so I can't see if there are personnel involved.
He just mentioned my name.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I did say town manager. Yes, there are.
I'm the only town manager in Monument. I have not been notified.
So. Mr. Carlson?
The motion to go into executive session is a privileged motion, and I think at this point, that motion could be renewed if the council wanted to consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Still can't go in an executive session without notifying me. You haven't notified me.
Or any other employee.
Mr. Vander Yott, I am not aware of personnel, except for mentioning town manager just now. How would you like to proceed before we go into executive session related to personnel?
It's my continued opinion that this should be all held in executive session because it does deal with personnel information that is private to the staff, and I have the obligation to deliver the report to you and explain to you what is in my findings, and then whether you take action. I think that should be in the public realm at the option of the staff that is mentioned, but I have the duty to reveal the information I've found to you.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing in the state statutes, correct, that states that there is a particular time notice required to be given to the employee in question. Am I correct on that? Because I can't, I don't see one. So given that there's no particular time constraint, we have every right to go into executive session, and I'm going to make that motion.
No, you don't.
Mr. Vander Yott, do you think that because you have the report and are aware of the contents?
I think it's most prudent to go into executive session.
Next. Right, that is not what he decides to do.
We paid him, we pay, we are paying this investigative attorney to provide us a report, not to provide us legal counsel. So he can provide, he provided us the report. We should be given time to digest it and review his recommendations. If we have questions, we should be able to recall him at a future date, but, and give notice to the town staff specifically who's, who are mentioned in this report. 147 pages of report, and no town employees have been given any notice that they may have been mentioned in here. And we're about to go into an executive session to discuss them? Not allowed.
I.
And we have no town staff to represent them themselves, or town attorney to represent them.
And since, since I've never, since I've not been notified.
Well, if they discuss us, if, if, if the, if the executive session is to discuss board members, you're not allowed, period. I'm not saying you can't go into executive session, but if you're going to discuss a town staff member, you must give them notice. They have the option to make it public before you discuss anything.
Okay, so would you rather this be in the public meeting?
You haven't given me notice. The notice, the. Yes, it's required so that I can obtain an attorney if I need to obtain an attorney. I need, I need to be able to obtain an attorney. This is the first I've been heard that I've even mentioned in the report.
Well, this is the first word hearing of it today.
Well, somebody, you just said, you, you just said you send it to the Gazette. When, when did you get? What, what?
I didn't say it could be canceled.
I nev-, I never said it could be canceled. I, no, I.
I waived my attorney-client privilege.
I sent you emails.
And requested that report be sent to anyone that also waived it. I know exactly what I did today. Thank you.
Don't look at me like that.
Exactly what I expected to happen, right here, right now. Well, guess what? What happened, happened. You can't undo that. Do you want to read the report? Because we could go through it right now. That's what you're preventing. You don't want to know the truth. Anyone want to know the truth here tonight? If not, we'll go into executive discussion to discuss the truth.
Back to order. I would actually like to address that. The charter clearly says that the new board takes over in January following the November election. It is clear as can be in the home rule charter. Okay. What did you need to do?
I was going to ask Mitch a different question, and I was going to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Romanello has a question.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Okay, it's not about Mitch. I just.
I'll cover his time. It's fine. Let's get the legal stuff taken care of.
My, my question is that I understand the principle that you cited and that they should have notice if we're going to be discussing them in executive session. How does that conflict, overlap, or, or not even matter to him having attorney-client privilege with us as a board and being able to ask him questions regarding attorney-client privilege of what he discovered? Does that, what the law that you cited, because staff is mentioned in that negate that attorney-client privilege that we have him? Is there, is it a gray area? I'm just curious about that from a legal perspective. Am I making sense with my question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So. So under the open meeting law, all meetings are open except for particular exceptions. One exception is receiving legal advice from an attorney. Another separate exception is personnel matters. If, if the personnel is to be discussed, that's when it kicks in that they need to be notified and be able to give their consent as to whether they want that public or in executive session. That's when it becomes the choice of the personnel.
Does, so just to clarify what I'm hearing, because that information, that would be the case, that would supersede any, like attorney-client privilege, we have to get information for what we contracted him for because that is precedent. Is that, am I making sense?
Yeah, it would be, right, they're two totally separate issues. So the, the personnel gets their rights when they're implicated. If particular personnel is not implicated, then we're in the more general area of receiving advice from counsel.
It, it seems difficult to separate those two at this time, in my opinion.
Grant. Mr. Vander Yott?
Problem that I have with those two blended concepts is that the particular personnel who I've identified don't have a right to be in the meeting with me when I'm talking to you about what I've identified. After I've given you the full report and the evidence about it, you guys have the authority to have another meeting, and it's at that point, in my opinion, that the staff would have the right to have an attorney present and object or anything like that and have notice and all of that. But my duty, you guys all had noticed that I was going to be revealing a report today that had those specific issues. I'm asking that that be in executive session because it's going to talk about staff. Those particular staff members don't have a right to be present during my discussion with you about the evidence. After that discussion, I think they do have a right to have notice. You can, I don't know what the, the amount of notice is, but they have the right to some.
I believe that since the report is out in the public, the executive session is no longer 100% confidential like our normal intent, our intent normally is. Therefore, I think that this is a different circumstance now than if the report weren't out in the public and you were going to discuss your findings in an executive session. I do believe that we're kind of past that now. It's no longer confidential.
I cannot speak to what is in the public. I did not release it to the public. So I still have a.
I disagree with you categorically. You released it to two people who don't sit on this board. All of the investigative documents, there's emails stating that you did.
And I'm planning on continuing to uphold my obligations to reveal it only to those people in executive session. That's, my recommendation is that it go back into executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
With a motion of a second, Ms. Hogan?
Are you ready for roll call on the motion in a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanning? No. Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Elliott?
No.
So that motion fails three to two. I think we'll. We should go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, goodbye.
Should, I think, this is.
Okay. You, you may leave.
I believe Quorum actually continues.
Yeah. I believe we still have Mr. Stevens attending online.
That's correct. I'm still here.
We have Mr. Stevens attending online.
Come on, Jim, get up and do the right thing.
One at a time.
What are we going to proceed with?
Mr. Vander Yott, I have a question for you. I asked Mr. Vander Yott if there is a way to discuss the content of the report without mentioning any names or titles, and Mr. Vander Yott said no, that that would not be, be possible. So do we have, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I, I move to adjourn.
Yeah. One second.
Do you want me, do you want me to address aspects that don't relate to any staff member?
That would be good. Okay. We don't have a second.
Well. This is trust, this is Councilman Stevens. I have a question in regards to, so we cannot proceed to, I just want to make sure I'm clear. We cannot proceed to executive session because the appropriate staff has not been notified. Is that correct?
That's what we're understanding.
Okay. So.
So.
Councilman Stevens, there are two different obligations that are in play. One is to the staff and one is to the attorney-client privilege. I'm asserting my privilege to executive session, which is exclusive of the staff's.
We would like to hear what Mr. Vander Grant, God, God has to say. What he has to say.
As I said earlier, I mean, we could go into a six-hour meeting, or we could adjourn right now. But the contents of the investigation are now public, and the truth is out there. And in the coming days, we will be making decisions about what we will do next. Thank you.
We do, we do have the option of continuing, a continuation.
Yes, so we can, in the coming days, as this is made public, we will take the appropriate actions, and I look forward to that. So I will make a motion.
I second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion is second. Ms. Hogan?
I need the motion to adjourn.
I second. Just to adjourn.
Are you ready for roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanning?
Yes, and we will have the link available for the public to view the report. Thank you.